Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regular board meeting of Dundee Township for May 2025. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Sorry, I was too excited. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Here.
Trustee Drake?
Here.
Trustee Fixmer?
Here.
Trustee Harney?
Here.
Supervisor Shaw?
Here.
I ask you all rise and join me in Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, please lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will have public comments, three minutes per speaker.
First person up is Courtney Bowe.
Oh, I did this. I love her. If I could just have a little forgiveness, I didn't time this out, but I'm pretty sure it's under three minutes. Dundee Township Board, welcome. I just wanted to come in. My name is Courtney Bowe. I'm the new Zillards Plus Campus Director. And I want to congratulate each and every one of you on your new position in your election. Full disclosure to you, I've met many of these individuals right when they were nominated or appointed in the caucus for this. And it's been a true honor to watch you guys go through this campaign season and come out so successful. So ordinarily, when I was growing up, I used to get cut flowers for all the recitals. But as we are supporting open spaces, I thought native plants would be better. So these are specifically from my garden. And one thing I just wanted to share with you guys that I've truly appreciated over the years is watching the plants through all of their seasons. We're usually so focused in the summertime with the blooms and the prettiness. But I encourage you to please plant these in your gardens so over the next four years, we get to see how things grow, not just in the garden, but through all of us, working together, working with our community, and working for our residents. I'm looking forward to it. I did pick one specifically for each of you. Supervisor Shaw, this is one of my favorite plants. It's the, can I approach, please?
Yes, yes.
This is a compass plant. It actually, its leaves fold up to conserve energy, and it focuses you towards the north and south. And I just thought while you were tracing your own trail, you could use that as a compass.
Thank you, Ms. Bowe.
Henry Dear and Charity. I have the vibrant butterfly mane for both of you because it makes the orange for you, Henry. And I mean, just, you need a bright orange, darling.
Thank you.
Melissa is indecent, so you will understand it. Oops, maybe this. Sorry. Liz, this is cream junction. Just do a very sweet, and you're saying, I think you do wonder. And Sue, my dear, this is the Bush of Poppy Mallow. I just thought you really make sure that we can always show our true colors and stand tall and bright, so thank you very much.
It's my favorite, one of my favorites.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eric Salas.
Hello, members of the board and everyone here today. I am Eric Salas over at Dundee Township Cemetery. Just wanted to give a bit of time to give some background information about myself. As a township resident myself, I started at Dundee Township Cemetery eight years ago, back in 2017. And I graduated with my associate's in fire science and safety from Elgin Community College. And from that early on, I recognized the great honor it was to be as part of the public work sector and workforce. And since then, the appreciation and joy that it brings me to be part of the community. And whether it's making arrangements for family during a difficult time, passing of a loved one, or providing closure and peace of mind to lay down someone to rest, or your final resting place, to construct the construction of library springs, to translations at the township office, to helping a resident across the street, or whether it's helping with wreaths across America so that every retreat gets a Christmas wreath and the honor and recognition they deserve for serving our country. Those are just a few things that allows me to give back to the community. And for that, I'm thankful and appreciative, and would gladly continue to provide service to all our community members and surroundings, as well as looking forward to future opportunities in doing so. I willingly and openly invite you to schedule a tour over at our cemetery. We'll do our best to accommodate you. Again, thank you, board members, and the Dundee Township community. Thank you.
Benasio Magia?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Benasio Magia, but a lot of people know me as Benji. I'm 23 years old, and I work at the Dundee Township Cemetery. I have been a resident of Parkerville my entire life, and I love where I live. Dundee is, for me, the best town here in Oklahoma. I started working for the Dundee Township Park District when I was 15 years old as a lifeguard and a swimming instructor. So for me, helping out kids and being a part of our community has always been something wonderful for me. I also now coach for the Dundee Township Park District. I coach soccer for them, so I volunteer my time and I do that. Serving the community has been a great honor. In my opinion, though, nothing beats working at the cemetery. For me, it's such a great pleasure to help people when, you know, they have such a difficult time losing a loved one. And having the community just come up to us and express how great of a job we do at keeping the grounds and, you know, maintaining their loved ones' resting places is the biggest honor that I've had, honestly. It's a feeling that I've never gotten before. And just helping out my community in so many different ways, coaching, and volunteer at the cemetery, and hopefully, and volunteer more often with you guys. I hope to grow, and I appreciate this opportunity to give it to you. Thank you.
John Salas?
Hi, everyone. But hi, everyone, I'm John Salas, and I work for the Dundee Township Cemetery. I have the cemetery, and I'm 20. I've been there for about four years. I'm more of a summer hulk. So I started when I was in high school, actually. I was time twice, twice. And I always thought that when I first started that it was just going to be like a summer job, like this is cemetery, and I was in LA, 96 there. But I've been there, and I keep going back every summer because I love it. I honestly never thought I'd come to the cemetery that much. And it's because I once had a coworker who told me, "Treat every grave like it's yours." And since then, like, my eyes opened, and honestly, I choose, I try, I teach, or like, so, um, but...
You're fine.
But I try to take care of all the graves myself as if they were my family. And it means a lot to be here, and like, they're having a back every year. Like, just last week, I was, two weeks ago, it was Mother's Day. I had this older gentleman, he was walking along these sections, and he was looking for his mother. And I helped him with that, and he told me his mom's name. And I didn't have to look at the system to like, check where he was. I just go off the top of my head. Like, these are people, or the graves at least, that I see every day. And I know where they are, and I take care of them. So it just made me really happy that I could take care of them and like, show them where his mom was laid. So I know it's not the happiest place. It's a cemetery, like, obviously, it's a hard job. It gets sad, you know, almost every day. But I like doing it because I like making people smile. And if I can help one person find their grave, or their loved one, then I'm happy. So I want to say thank you so much for your time, and congratulations on the way through. Thank you.
Dan County?
Hi, my name is Dan Kennedy. I work in open space, and that's a tough act, I'll always forget. I should probably suggest I use ChatGPT, and I shouldn't have took you up on that. So I was born in Dundee Township. I still live in Dundee Township. I work in open space, like I said. And I have a township truck with M-plates. So if you guys want to check out any place, just call me. I'll give you a ride over there. That's it, welcome and congratulations.
Eric Bibic?
Sorry about my outfit. I am on the clock, and I'm good. Hello, my name is Eric Bibic, and I've been working with the cemetery since the last season, so I just, I've lived around Parkervilleville, and I grew up here, and it's just an honor to be here. I'm passionate about serving the community, and I love the opportunity to work here. It just brings me joy, just helping people. Like John said, like, I can just help them when they need, like, look for anybody that they need to, like, just need a hug or anything. He's home in a minute. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but thank you.
Ken Shaker?
Hello, everyone. So congratulations, three states that you're here. And there'll be a lot of learning in the future here, I'm sure. So I just want to congratulate you on your win and your presentation. I did have a couple of concerns because I've heard rumors. So I'm just trying to clarify which may come down on the agenda later. Sort of good reconfiguration of the staffing of the township. As I understand it, I don't believe you're anyone working full-time in the office, so that's a concern for me. But we'll see how that gathers out. And then only one other concern that I'll bring up. Just we've had a good cross-section of the township here, and predominantly now, it looks like we have a lot of these Dundee board members. So if the occasion arises and there's financial consideration, I would be hopeful that you support the, all of the residents of Dundee Township. Is this a charitable thing to Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Lauren?
I think you called me. My hearing is awful, and I was in the van. I'm Tim Lawrence with Duquesne and Ave. And we're here to promote motorcycle awareness on this May date. All of the, there's going to be a proclamation, if I'm mistaken, for motorcycle awareness. Our organization promotes awareness in the high school level. We offer free driver's ed level riders' courses and drivers' courses. So even the kids who are never going to touch a motorcycle know how they work and what to expect. And that's all free to the taxpayer. But it's, it's, it makes our lives better, makes the kids' lives safer. It's always, one of the things we do to stay involved in the community. We're also politically involved. We're nonpartisan. We keep an eye on the State House and make sure that which solution that's, for motorcyclists gets promoted. And I just wanted to come by tonight, and I understand where there's going to be a, the township's going to go as a proclamation of collaboration of some sort with the Motorcycle Awareness Month. And I just wanted to thank everybody for your time and attention. That's it.
Is there anybody else in one of those seats? That's all we have for public comment.
So is there anyone else who wants to address the board? Okay. So I will close the portion, this portion of this meeting. Next, we have presentations. This evening, we have three presentations, two now. Mr. Doherty from Pingree Grove Public Works. Mr. Doherty? He's not here. Okay, he's not here, so we'll move on. Duquesne just went, and... Is there anyone else for the public, for the presentation, FDNA?
Madam Supervisor, I will do that part. There's, we have a couple of things that I'll be doing my report.
Okay, all right. Then we'll move, if there's no other presentations right now, we'll move and close this item. Okay, so now we have, the next item on the agenda is reports. We can start with the sheriff's report.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Congratulations to those who have been truly attuned and elected. I do see some familiar faces, unfamiliar faces. My name is Santiago Hernandez. I worked at King County Sheriff's Office for five years in the patrol division. Aside from being a township deputy, I'm also a field training officer. So we're a pretty fast-paced, underdepartment. I'm all over the place, so bear with me. A couple of things I wanted to point out for new members and for those who are unfamiliar, is the King County Sheriff's Office serves unincorporated King County. So it has Dundee and Elgin, which is the areas that I serve primarily within the afternoon shift. That is where you'll find me. So you may see me on Long Meadows, Skyline, Bull's Road. Don't get any ideas now. And just be aware that's out there, please abide. A couple of things I wanted to point out is we do have our Calls for Service map on our website for those who are interested about what's going on within unincorporated Dundee Township. Those reported incidents are on our website. Same thing now that it's summertime, a lot of us have kids out. For those who want to see who are listed as compliant registered sex offenders, that and that is also on our website. What else I wanted to point out is that with the Sheriff's Office, being in the patrol division, it's not uncommon for me to peel off every once in a while, however, I'll stick around for any questions and concerns. Ultimately, the goal of the Township Deputy Program is to have one deputy assigned to that specific area for me being Elgin Dundee, and to familiarize myself with our partners, our politicians, our residents, and everything else that comes along with it, whether that is quality of life service, quality of life problems, traffic complaints, to assisting other agencies, to arrest warrants, and everything else under the sun. So I'll stick around for questions if I can. And I'm not sure if the board has anything else for me right now. Otherwise, congratulations again, and give it to your sign right there.
The assessor?
Good evening. My name is Mike Belec. I'm the Dundee Township Assessor. Everybody's hand this evening is up, so congratulations.
Thank you.
This is new for me, too. This is the first time I've experienced an entirely new board, except for...
Except for me.
I haven't come to these meetings that long.
You and I came in, no, I just came in this before you. You came one term after I did, yeah.
Yeah. So this is a new experience for me, too, getting to know a whole new board. And same this way. Again, welcome. Just a little bit about Dundee Township and Dundee Township Assessor's office. We have a staff of four, if any of you, we're at the annual town meeting. I mentioned some of this, I'm not going to go through all of it. We have 23,498 parcels. Of that, 20,750 are residential, and 1,650 are commercial and industrial. Also, for another perspective, we have 2 billion, 2.75 billion in equalized assessed value, EAV. You'll be hearing or seeing that throughout your tenure. That has to do with the tax rate, the levy, and so forth. You'll be seeing that number, EAV, equalized assessed value. That is one-third of market value. Of the 2.75 billion, 1 billion is commercial and industrial. That's quite a bit for a township. That's about 38% of the total tax roll in our township. It's commercial, industrial. That's a really good, solid industrial base. That takes away taxes going to the resident. It spreads it to most problems. So we're, we're good on that aspect in our township. We're good. This year, I just got the report. Dundee Township has eight of the top 20 taxpayers in the county. That's quite a few. That includes San Felipe. The mall used to be on there. The mall used to be the leader back when I started. Things have shifted. That's part of our job, assessing and real estate. It's always changing. And our job is always changing. We're chasing one revenue. Now we do industrials, those big properties, big ugly properties. They generate tax revenue. They generate more tax revenue now than malls do, a lot of retail, surprisingly. Yeah, current, back in 2010, Dundee Township used to have seven of the top 10 taxpayers in the county. That's when the mall was good. We had Elgantown Commons. Things shifted around a little bit, you know, growth and so forth. We're still doing really well with that. Just our makeup overall with our property tax base, we're very good. It's shifting now towards residential townhomes, a little bit of single-family. Not so much industrial growth anymore, which is a good thing, I hope. So that's what my staff is now getting busy, or getting ready to do. They're going to go out and measure some of these new constructions. You'll see them on Coffee Road, Long Meadow, and 72. There's four of us, well, five total, including myself. I've been the assessor since 2010. I've been doing this a long time. I was listening to the cemetery and the open space staff, and those guys did a great job. And it's like, how can I follow that? Well, let me tell you. You start adding up, what was it, the cemetery, there's one guy's 20, the other one's 23. Well, and along their ages, and I think I, they might equal me in 67. I've got a little bit of experience, about 42 years as an assessor, so. I enjoy my job, my staff enjoys their job. We like to help the public. We help seniors. That's, we help them with the senior freezes. We do about 200, 250 a year. We're still working on those. They look forward to seeing us. We're still helping right now, so. You may see later, if you go into the bills, there's quite a few bills from us for training. We were down in Bloomington. That's our annual training. There was three of us down there. I also went to Plums, Ohio. I am a CAE, Certified Assessment Evaluator through the High Dobleto International Association of Assessing Officers. That's the highest level assessing accreditation in the country. So I'm a force of training and mapping in Plums, so it's very beneficial. One last thing. We did close our books, May 14th. We should be publishing the end of June, beginning of July. That's up to the county. And the public will have 30 days to appeal their assessments after that date. And we deal with a lot of calls, we get real busy in that time period. Sentative factor is pretty high. It's 1.0942. That's just what the market's pushing for, so we're not the only ones. And with that, I will leave that. If you have any questions for me, now or later, anytime, feel free to give me a, email, whatever. Thank you, lovely.
We've already received a report from Highway Commissioner, Open Space, and the Mental Health Board. Would the trustees like to present a report?
I will. Okay, I'm going to talk briefly about this particular flow chart that the trustees have, and that all of you are welcome to have copies of should you want one. The flow chart describes how the cooperation between volunteer organization called the Friends of Dundee Natural Areas and the township in order to work on open space and areas, natural areas in the township itself. I want to give all the trustees and the supervisors credit, for all of them. They have each sat through, or they've all sat through about an hour and a half to two hours' worth of information and training that we did with FDNA about the projects that we're doing. And so they know a lot about this already. But I wanted to talk to the public, and I also want to lay the groundwork for what we, what I'd like to happen next month. What we are trying to do with the open space is we have some severe erosion problems on both Shaw Creek and Cottonwood Creek. One of Raceway Woods, on the west side of Raceway Woods. The other, Cottonwood Creek, is up on the north side of the Dixie Briggs from Open Space property. They are severe. They will require quite a few grants in order to be able to fund fixing them. And so we have to lay the groundwork now to get those grants. And that's what FDNA would like us to get done. They have done the actual, the groundwork of what we need next. And what we need next is a Phase 1 engineering plan. And that will be expensive. We have to hire a qualified engineer in this field. And we have worked with a man called Ted Gray before. He's with Living Waters. He has done work like this for us, both up at Dixie and at Raceway Woods. And so the proposal that I will be presenting to the board next month is for us to sign a proposal that Ted Gray has put forth to do this Phase 1 engineering study for just one of the watersheds, the one at Shaw Creek, which was at Raceway Woods. The price is $18,500. And of course, for everybody sitting in the audience, and for those of us who do household budgets, that is an enormous amount of money. But consider that when you do that, you will get multimillion-dollar grants to actually do the work. This is the first step of it. And so I am bringing this proposal before the board, and it'll be on the website. I'm not sure it's on the website yet or not, but it will be. They all have copies of it. And what we're proposing is that FDNA will contribute the work that they've already done, which is a lot of legwork, with one of our, one of our members, Domenico De La Sondro. And then we will hire Ted Gray with Living Waters, and the township will pay a portion of that $18,500. And the Friends of Dundee Natural Areas will pay another portion. The ask that I have for the township, so all of you know, is $12,000 for this study, and FDNA will come up with the other $6,500. So that'll be a donation. The township will do the contract with Living Waters because, of course, this is on township land, and the liabilities and all the things that go with this have to go through the township. So this is what the presentation in the, the agenda is about FDNA. And I am now going to make a motion that we put this on the agenda for consideration at the June meeting.
One second, ma'am.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? No, okay. Clerk, Madam Clerk, please get a roll call.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is my report.
So the motion was made by trustee...
Harney.
Harney, and seconded by trustee Day. And... Okay. So the next item is approval of April 16, 2025, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
The motion is made, and is there a second? You seconded, okay. The motion is made by trustee Harney, seconded by trustee Drake. If there is no discussion... Okay, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Approval of Treasurer's Report is the next item. Yes, Mr. Coughlin, please present.
Good evening. Welcome and congratulations to everyone who has watched this year. My name is Tom Coughlin. I work for governmental accounting. We help you all with the ins and outs of the finance world, from the monthly financial, paying bills, entering deposits, budget fluffies, across the board, payrolls. So, we look forward to working with all of you. Happy to field any questions once I complete my report here or in the future. So, we're two months into our fiscal year, through the end of April. Relatively quiet on the revenue side, so we expected. We've brought in ninety-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars so far. That's two percent of the budget. We know we haven't gotten those paying taxes coming in. We should have gotten a deposit today, and then the next large installment will be easier. So, we'll see those revenue numbers swing, swing up pretty quickly. On the expense side, total operating expenses so far, about four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That's eight percent of the budget. So, we're actually nine points below where we'd expect to be. So, that's fine. At this point, we're early in the fiscal year. That's okay. All the major categories are on track. Salaries, maintenance is a little bit high, but it looks like that was for some work in the cemetery with the budget. So, that's okay. So, overall, we're showing a deficit right now, two months into the fiscal year, of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, two fifty-three. Nothing to be alarmed with. Like I said, those tax dollars will come in in the coming months and swing that to a surplus. But current fund balance, we're at about four point seven million. So, all looking good there. Looking at our bank accounts, we have several accounts at First American Bank, and then downstate at the Illinois Funds. Total book balance there, four million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty. So, that ties nicely with our fund balance, which we like to see. Are there any questions? Good. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Fixmer. Is there a discussion? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Motion, the next we have is audit and approval of bills. We're going to motion to table the bills to next month. Is there a, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a discussion? Okay.
Explain briefly.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'll explain briefly. So, one of the policies that's going to get, well, I don't want to presume things tonight, right, but allows the township to function like any other unit of local government, where bills can get paid prior to audit and approval, right? So, you don't have to issue a warrant and then, you know, trustee, you're shaking your head because you know this. So, the bills aren't going to be late, right? We're not going to get late fees or anything like that, because they're tabled till next month. They'll come through. You'll audit them next month, and they'll get approved. So, just a note on that.
Okay, madam clerk, please do the roll call.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is old business. Is there any old business that any members of this board wish to bring forward? Okay. So, I will close this portion of the meeting. Next item is new agenda, approval of Township Board Operations Policy. So, we have, the first item on the new business is approval of the following. Board meeting rules of procedure, policy regarding rules of decorum, policy and procedures for electronic attendance at board meetings, policy regarding purchasing of goods and services, policy for preapproval of township expenditures, ethics and gift ban policy, and policy to prohibit sexual harassment. Copies of these were provided to the board members. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
No, we don't have any.
We don't have any.
We haven't seen any of that.
We haven't seen any of it.
If we can get a motion to second, then we can discuss.
Okay, I'll second. There's a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll send a motion for discussion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
So, just briefly, so these are the same policies. The only policy that the old board had, the reason we put them all on the first agenda is because, once the board's term is over, technically, its authority dissolves, right? So, the authority of the old board, so, two of these policies, well, multiple of these policies are required by state law. The ethics policy, the sexual harassment policy required by state law. We talked about the preapproval of bills, and that the only new policy would be the policy on remote attendance. And so, the Open Meetings Act allows for remote attendance in two circumstances. One circumstance would be like during COVID nineteen, when there was, you know, no one could gather like this while we were today. They didn't exist at the time, so it was a very busy time for people like me. But the other, the other way would be is there's a quorum physically present of the board. One or two, in this case, of the trustees would be able to participate remotely for four specific reasons. It would be a childcare obligation, a health issue, traveling for the township, or for their own work, or in emergency situation. So, those would be, and in order to do that, to allow that, there has to be a policy that's passed. And I think the policy calls for notice, I think twenty-four hours or as practicable, right? We don't know when we're going to get sick always. And it's a very standard type of policy that many of other clients have adopted. So, nothing out of the ordinary in there.
Is there a motion to approve these policies?
We already have.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
All right, is there any other discussion?
I think this sounds like a good idea. I, yeah, I was a little bit worried about this. So, thank you for having us there now.
Okay. So, clerk, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the policies are hereby approved as presented. Next, we have appointment of deputy township clerk. So, I am seeking motion to approve resolution five twenty-one, twenty-five oh one. A resolution is to authorize the appointment of deputy clerk, which would be Daniel Kennedy. Is there a motion?
So moved. Come on, you guys. You gotta make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the motion was made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Drake. Is there any discussion?
So, this is another one. So, previously, so the way the statute works is the board is allowed to decide whether the clerk gets a deputy clerk or not. And then, the clerk gets to pick the deputy if the board so allows. So, this is a resolution that says that. It's essentially the same thing, same resolution that was in effect, just new deputy clerk.
Okay. So, with that, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion's carried, and the resolution is hereby approved as presented. Next item is appointment for FOIA officer. State law requires the board designate one or more officials to the act as its Freedom of Information Act. I move to appoint Maria Navarez as township, as the township's FOIA officer. Ms. Navarez, please complete the electronic curriculum developed by Public Access Counselor on or before June twenty, twenty twenty-five. And thereafter, complete the annual training programs in accordance with FOIA. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is seconded. The motion is made by?
You.
By me, and seconded by trustee Harney. Is there a discussion? Okay. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Wait.
Oh.
Do you want to say something again?
Okay.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the appointment is approved as presented. Appointment of OMA officer. The next item is to appoint Open Meetings Act officer. State law requires that the board designate one or more officials or employees to act as an OMA officer. I move to appoint Maria Navarez as township OMA officer. That Ms. Navarez complete the electronic curriculum developed by the Public Access Counselor on or before June twenty, twenty twenty-five, and thereafter, complete annual training programs in accordance with OMA. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, approved. The motion is made by me and seconded by trustee Day. Is there a discussion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries, and the appointment is approved as presented. Next item is appointment for township accountant. The next, the, sorry. So, the next item on new business is appointment of township accountant. The Township Code carries the township board to engage independent contractors as deemed necessary. I'm seeking motion to appoint Governmental Accounting, Inc. as township accountant, and to ratify the agreement with Governmental Accounting, Inc. Is there such a motion?
Is there a second?
Yes.
So, the motion is made by trustee Fixmer and seconded by trustee Day. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The motion carries, and the appointment is approved as presented. Appointment to township attorney. In accordance with the Township Code, the township attorney is appointed by supervisor with the advice and consent of the township board. As a supervisor, I have appointed Erdo Rourvez LLC as township attorney. A copy of the agreement for the attorney services with Erdo Rourvez was provided to the board members in advance. I'm seeking a motion to approve the appointment as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I guess.
The motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Day. Is there a discussion? Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was, I'll note that the...
We have none of those.
Yeah, the agreement was not included. I can circulate that. But it's the same agreement.
It's the same agreement.
Yeah. Okay. So, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. So, the motion carries, and the appointment is approved as presented. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Appointment of Township Auditor. The copy... Okay, so, to appoint Sheldon Fox as township auditor for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five, financial audit, and to ratify the agreement with Sheldon Fox. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Day. Is there a discussion?
These are the same people we had before.
Yeah, yes.
And the same agreement.
Yes.
And I'll say, you're noted, it's, you know, at this point, you're about well into the audit anyway.
I was going to say.
Change auditors. Tom's sweating over there.
I have been working with the auditors. They're going to do field work at the meeting in June, so all good there.
Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the appointment is hereby approved as presented. Appointment of Summit Square Owners Association representative. At the meeting of unit owners earlier this month, trustee Harney was elected as a board member and as a secretary of association. As such, I move to appoint trustee Harney as the township's representative on the board and as an officer of Summit Square Owners Association to authorize trustee Harney to take all necessary and appropriate action to carry out her duties and responsibilities as a board member and officer of Summit Square Owners Association, subject to direction and control of the township board, and to ratify any and all prior actions taken by trustee Harney since being elected to the board and as an officer of the Summit Square Association. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is seconded. Is there any discussion?
So, I could just, I can note briefly that, so, because this is a community property building, right, there's a condominium association, and as an owner, the township is entitled to have members elected to the association board and as officers of the association. And, you know, just because of the timing of how the meetings occurred, the meeting occurred, trustee, you may remember specifically, but it was earlier this month, and that was, they elected trustee Harney at that time, the other unit owner. So, that's the kind of short explanation of that. And this would be authorizing trustee Harney to act on behalf of the board in that capacity.
And just so all you know, any major decisions that come before the condominium board, I will bring back to the township board for direction.
Thank you, trustee Harney. So, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Abstain.
And supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the appointment is hereby approved as presented. The next item of new business is appointment of mental health board member. I move to appoint trustee Harney as township board representative member on the Dundee Township Community Mental Health Board. Is there a second?
Second.
The, the motion is made by trust, by me and seconded by trustee Drake. Sorry, you guys sounded the same. Is there any further discussion? All right, so I've promised trustee Harney that she'll get flowers for doing the two jobs every meeting. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Abstain.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the appointment is hereby approved as presented.
Consideration for staffing reorganization, I move to amend the agenda to, the agenda to move item number eleven-ten, considering, consideration of staff to after item number twelve, executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is made by, made by me and seconded by trustee Harney. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the agenda is so amended. Executive session. I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to section two C one of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of township. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion was made by me and seconded by trustee Harney. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and we will adjourn to executive session at seven forty-seven P M. I call this meeting back to order at eight fifty-three P M. Madam clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Day?
Here.
Trustee Drake?
Here.
Trustee Fixmer?
Here.
Trustee Harney?
Here.
Supervisor Shaw?
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is consideration of staffing reorganization. Mr. Kimsey, take it away.
So, the proposal for staffing reorganization is as follows. For the interim, cemetery manager would be Eric. Forgive me, I'm not going to say his last name.
Satlas.
But it would be hourly, up to sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars per year. For the assistant cemetery manager on an interim basis, paid hourly, would be Benji, up to fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars per year. And then, on an interim basis, would be John, moving to the open space department and paid hourly, up to forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-four thousand. And last but not least, would be not on an interim basis, but moving Ari from part-time to full-time on an hourly basis for a salary up to, or an hourly wage up to forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars per year. I already said, yeah. To get a motion, if there's a motion.
Is there a, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by trustee Day, seconded by trustee Drake. Is there any discussion? No. Okay, madam clerk, please do the roll call.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries, and the staffing reorganization plan is hereby approved as presented. Other business and adjournments. Anything else for the good of the order?